Time is now five P M. The work session was welcomed order. Wanted to welcome everyone to tonight's very informative session. With us tonight is Mr. Sam Light of SERSA. And he will go through the process and kind of get us going and hopefully inform some of us some of the stuff we not, we don't know, maybe any new stuff. That'll turn over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all very much. Touch the screen.
There we go. I should have asked this technology piece before I started to go forward. How do I advance the slides?
You're just gonna have to slide it on this one. Yeah. Use the other end of that.
Right, left.
Use your finger.
There's the.
Click on the side.
Yeah.
The side arrow.
Click on the side one of there?
No, that's gonna take us back to.
Start slideshow. But I wonder if you'd be able to stop it.
There we go.
Keep up.
Still don't wanna.
There it is. Just touch it.
There you go.
I wanna go backwards now.
Think if we go back on, maybe on this one here?
No.
Fine. Drag your finger across.
Welcome to Trinidad.
There we go.
There we go. All right.
That's a P T for me. I just had my shoulder rebuilt since then. Thank you all. Mayor, Council, Board, and Commissioners and Staff, thanks for having me down. I really appreciate the opportunity to come down and visit with you all. So, my name is Sam Light. I'm General Counsel for SERSA, your insurance provider. I'll give you a little bit more information about them in a minute. And my presentation is called Suggestions for Success for Elected and we can also say Appointed Officials as well. It's got a little bit longer title. You see, I also put in there Suggestions for Success for In and Avoiding the Risk of Liability for Municipal Officials. I find if we spend most of our energy and time focusing on the suggestions for success in terms of how we do our job as elected appointed officials, how we work together as elected appointed officials, how we interact with our community, with our staff, with our constituents, then that's success. And when we do those things and make those commitments, then by and large, you know, the risk of liability is gonna take care of itself. And we're gonna have very few problems with legal claims or disputes. So I like to emphasize the suggestions for success in terms of commitments that we make together. And if we make those commitments to each other and the community, then by and large, our liabilities, these will take care of themselves. So, all right, let's try it again here. There we go. Just a little bit more about me. So, I joined SERSA as their General Counsel in-house a little more than a year ago. Before that, I was a municipal attorney in the trenches just like Les, representing small to mid-sized cities and towns around the state. I did that for about twenty, twenty-five years. What I liked about the transition from going from municipal lawyer to municipal insurance company, General Counsel, is I still get to work with all of you, right? And no matter how difficult our debates are, no matter how fractured we are on an issue, or how divisive an issue may seem, if we step back and look at what we're doing on behalf of our communities, we're trying to be good on behalf of our communities, right? And so that's what I really enjoy about municipal law and municipal work is even though sometimes things may get tough, usually it's because people are working for the betterment of their community. So thank you for everything you do on behalf of your community and for your service. A little bit about SERSA, particularly for the new folks, but SERSA stands for the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing E B C. We are not a commercial insurance carrier. We are what's called a public entity self-insurance pool. And what that means is we were formed by, and our membership consists solely of Colorado cities and towns. That's it. That's our whole book of business. We don't write commercial trucking insurance or maritime insurance, we write insurance for Colorado cities and towns and affiliated N V Vs like housing authorities and our green hall authorities. And that's it. That's our whole book of business. We're very, very proud of that because we think it makes us uniquely positioned to understand the risks and insurance needs of our members. And we're very proud of that. The City of Trinidad is in our workers' compensation pool and our property casualty pool. I think that was from day one. We joined both of our pools when they were originally formed. We were actually created back in the mid-eighties. We first started a property casualty pool and then we added workers' comp a couple of years later. Just so you get a sense of our size, we have two hundred and seventy-six members in the pool. That's most of the municipalities in the state except for the real large ones and a couple of others. For example, Sidney County, Denver, Aurora, those big municipalities typically self-insure. But we have two hundred and seventy-three members in our property casualty pool and a hundred and forty-four in our workers' compensation pool. One of my main messages for you all is that SERSA isn't like your typical insurance carrier. You know, you're sending the claim to your auto liability carrier. Well, the other thing, we're not typical because we don't really have an animal on our ads, right? We don't have a duck or a gecko or whatever. But more seriously, we, to whatever extent you desire, as much or as little as you desire, we consider proactive working together with our members to be a win-win for everyone. If you've got a safety issue or a loss control issue or an issue that may become a claim but isn't actually a claim yet, if you would like our assistance in working on those issues, we're happy to do that. We have all sorts of training resources for our members. In addition to this kind of training that I do, we have loss control people is the, you know, the people who deal with our audit, no, right? We have loss control people that will come down and do an audit. But we're also available to do loss control and safety training for your operational staff. I do this kind of training for elected officials, also for staff, from everything to harassment issues, to contracting, to governmental ethics. So if we can help in that regard, please let us know. Every member has a dedicated loss control representative, dedicated underwriting representative, dedicated claims person. And so we consider it a win-win if we can help you with your needs, whatever they may be. The other thing we're real proud of is, I put this in here not only to enhance the color of my presentation because the rest of the slides are just black ink, you know. But we at SERSA recently went through an exercise to kind of step back because we've been in this business now since nineteen eighty-two, so we're coming up on forty years, right? Step back and sort of ask ourselves, what is our mission? And what do we bring to our members, right? And we went through this exercise. This is what they call a story finding exercise, where you could do this for an organizational mission. We had some folks help us define, redefine, re-up our commitment to who we are as an organization. And we came to the bottom line, that our conclusion was what we do as SERSA is we exist to enable Colorado communities to thrive and prosper, right? Yeah, we provide insurance. But we're proud of, this is kind of an organic exercise that we went through. If you might go through with your management team and your staff or something, and you say, well, what are our core values? And yes, the word risk and risk management appears on this slide, but community appears more on this slide because we're really proud of the fact that we're a team member with you to help you serve your community. And that kind of distinguishes us from partial carriers. Okay. Oh, look at that. All right. A little bit about, just an overview of my presentation. First and foremost, I want to make the presentation as helpful to all of you as possible. So please feel free to ask questions at any time, and we can have a discussion about issues of interest to you. These are what I call suggestions for good governance or best practices. And kind of based on our years of observing, what do we do in local government service? We go to a lot of night meetings, right? Right? There are years of experience of observing how boards and commissions and city councils and town boards interact with each other, interact with their citizens, how you do your job. It's based on our years in observing the way in which elected bodies and appointed officials can either get into trouble or stay out of trouble from a liability perspective. Recognize that my presentation is a training resource only. I do a lot of these trainings, and we may start having a little back and forth on an issue that you want to talk about. I've got pretty good antenna for what I call the live one, you know? If you're asking me a question and go, well, what if another council, and I go, huh, this sounds like the burning issue of the day. If it is, less is your guy. Yeah, I may give you a couple of thoughts and suggestions, but if it's, if I'm sensing it's an issue that's going on in the here and now for which you as elected appointed officials need legal advice from your city attorney, then I'm gonna deflect that. Or if it's something that you're gonna need staff support from, then I'll deflect that to Michael. Happy to give you a couple of suggestions from SERSA's perspective. And I do have pretty good radar for kind of the here and now issues that may need to give some more attention from your staff and city attorney's office, or maybe an offline conversation. My other caveat is if there's any inconsistency, and I don't think there is, I think the suggestions that I give are probably gonna pretty neatly aligned with the suggestions that you get from your own city attorney's office on legal issues. But if there's any inconsistency between my comments on legal issues and your city attorney's advice, blame that on me, okay? Blame that on me. And your city attorney's advice prevails. All right. Couple of things about the presentation materials. They have copies of the slides for you. I just handed out three other little handouts that, because of time constraints, I want to be respectful of your time. They do drill down on a couple of issues that I'm gonna touch on briefly, but I just gave you a couple of other handouts as well. And then lastly, I wanted to point out, I just provided copies of these to all the council members and an extra one or two to the clerk. At SERSA, we published this book called Ethics Liability: Best Practices Handbook for Elected Officials. We just published this edition in June. And I would commend it to you as a reading resource. Hopefully, you find it enjoyable reading and user-friendly. We tried to go light on the kind of legalese and more heavy on practical suggestions for you all as elected officials on the types of issues that you face in your job as elected officials. So that's there for you. If we run out, we also have electronic version that the clerk can get you a link to. It's available publicly online. You don't mind that being shared with everybody in the organization if you'd like to do that. Okay. All right. As I said, I organized my presentation around suggestions, but let's talk about suggestion one, recognizing the change in roles. That's kind of a refresher no matter how long you've been on the council or on the board. So who else, brand new to council? Almost brand new, like last election? One or two, and we got one or two that didn't... All right, then we got some incumbents. How many been on council, two to four years? Forty-eight? Anyone with thirty-four years? That's my record. Thirty-four. Right, my reaction when I heard the thirty-four years, I said, wait a second, term limits? No, no, no. Because there is a statutory town, right? So it's mayor, trustee, mayor, trustee, and that's how you get thirty-four years of service if any of you are interested in that. That's how you get thirty-four. But I also told the gentleman, they told me that there's a community down in southwest Colorado. So I told that trustee that if I found someone with more than thirty-four years on the council board, I would let him know. So that's... But again, no matter whether you're brand new, or you've been on the council or on your board and commission as well for a number of years, remember that when you become a government official, your role to the organization and the community changes dramatically, right? Okay? Right? You're no longer just a citizen in Trinidad. You're a government official twenty-four seven, right, Mayor?
Yeah, exactly.
It's the ten P M. phone call. It's the seven A M. bump into you at the grocery store. Hey, Mayor, what's going on in the city, right?
It's the church question.
Yeah, yeah. In the eyes of the community, yes, you're not required to give up your personal life, but just keep in mind that in the eyes of the community, you're always a government official. And so the way you interact with the community and with each other, it's always gonna be perceived, hey, there's a city council member, right? There's a planning commission member. What are their views, right? And so remember that. Remember also that you're no longer an outsider to city government. You're no longer an outsider to the government in general. You're now the ultimate insider, right? You are the government, right? Whatever your reason for wanting to get involved in the city, quite often people come to government service because they want to champion a certain cause, or their critic of a particular issue, or the way something is handled. Or maybe they have the view that I'd like to contribute something individually, I have something to offer, or I want to get in there and shake things up. Recognize that all of those are kind of outside perspectives, right? And now on the inside, right, you don't have the luxury of being a critic or proponent of the one interest, one issue that may have interested you, right? Particularly if you as elected officials, you're now not just a critic or proponent on, you know, the one or two interesting issues that interest you. You're now a representative of the city on behalf of all of the issues that come in front of the city council, right? Remind me, do you have wards?
No.
Yeah, so you're all elected at large, right?
Correct.
So make it a hallmark of your tenure to be a great representative on behalf of the city with regard to all of the issues that come in front of you as a city councillor. Yeah, there're gonna be some that are more interesting to you than others, but you have this amazing variety of things, right? You gotta run police department. You gotta deal with tax issues. You gotta run utilities. You gotta land use. You got all sorts of amazing variety of things. Your constituents will applaud your being a great representative for all of the issues that come in front of you. Keep that broader policy focus in mind. Okay. Check in with everybody, but particularly the new folks who took the oath of office, right? I hope you got that detail taken care of. Yeah. Yeah, let's check in on what our oath of office entails. It's kind of a good way to, from a broad angle, look at what our role and responsibility is. Everybody took the oath of office? I started up all the constitution and laws of the state of Colorado and the charter and ordinances of the City of Trinidad, right? That has meaning for you as government officials morally, ethically, legally, right? So keep that, keep that in mind. What does that commitment entail? Some examples are we made a commitment, right, when we took the oath to respect the boundaries and allocations of responsibility, except by law. We're gonna talk about how everyone in the organization has a job description. Our certain responsibilities are allocated to the council and the council only. Certain others are allocated to the management staff only, right? And what, what does that mean? We also made a commitment to follow lawful conduct, including following, we got a big, big code book, right? That's what we have in government. We got lots of ordinances, lots of rules, lots of policies, right? Part of our oath is we made a commitment to follow the laws that regulate how we do business as elected and appointed officials, including, importantly, providing due process, right? Remember that old Fifth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, U.S. Constitution, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, right? Do we have a planning commissioner here?
Yes.
Who is responsible for providing due process at the local level for matters that come in front of the planning commission? You. Nobody else. Nobody else can do it for us. Sometimes there's no do-overs, right? So one of the most prideful points of our job as elected appointed officials on behalf of our community is we provide process. That's really part of the substance that we deliver. We provide a forum for conversation. And particularly when we're making decisions that affect people's property rights, protected interests, we as elected appointed officials have an obligation to provide them with due process. And we'll talk about what that means and how important that commitment is. Of course, when everyone was elected or appointed, they became a government official for purposes of the city code of ethics, right? So we, elected appointed officials and staff are all subject to our ethics code. Maybe this last bullet doesn't fall, you know, so neatly out of the oath, but how many members do we have on planning commission?
There are seven.
Seven. We have seven council members. All of our other boards and commissions have multiple members, right?
Five to seven to nine.
Yeah, yeah. But with council, or wherever we are, if we got elected to the council, we got elected to a group that has seven members, but there is but one council. And it has but one voice. Yeah, I mean, some nights it's gonna be tough to get to that one voice. It's gonna be a four-three vote, not every, you know, and that's okay. Healthy deliberation and debate and dissenting opinions and a no vote, you know? Everything was seven oh all the time.
It's boring.
I don't know. Staff, is it boring? I don't know if it is or not, right? But part of the job then is if, if we commit to the point that our council, our commission, our board, the power we bring to this organization is we have our one voice. This is what council said. This is what the planning commission recommended, right? Then it must mean that as individual members of that council or board, there's embedded in the oath kind of this commitment to respect our diverging opinions, respect our different styles, have professional courtesy with each other enough to get to the point where we speak with that one voice. And we're gonna talk about what that means a little bit more. Can I go forward or right away?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think the other part of recognizing your role, particularly at the city council level, is we're, it's a corporation, right? We're a corporation, right? And our council is essentially the board of directors of that corporation. But as elected leaders, we all become the guardians or stewards of the city as a city, right? And maybe it's staying at that forty thousand foot level. Critical part of our job is to protect the interest and assets of the city as a city. And from that perspective, you know, kind of the overarching principle of decision-making, yes, there are all sorts of criteria that apply to certain types of decisions, but overarching way of looking at the job is in our decision-making, the question should always be, what's the right thing to do for the city as a city? What's the decision that'll stand the test of time, right? And council members, you know that's not easy, right? That ain't easy sometimes. Because some nights, some nights, you know, what's the right thing to do for the city? Some nights you're gonna have a vocal, very small vocal group of citizens. Do you have a podium back there? You do. You know, and they're saying, do this, do this loudly, you know? Do this, council, do this. And you're thinking, you know, I bet if we do that tonight, this is gonna be back in our lap in a month, right? Or somebody's saying, you know, during public comment, about people not on the agenda, it wasn't even on the agenda at all, they come up, say, we gotta do this tonight, do it tonight, do it tonight, right? And you're thinking to yourself, hmm, I bet if we do that, we're gonna get it from some other direction, right? So recognize one of your strongest powers as council is you have the prerogative and the power that usually, I know once in a while you got issues that require some immediate attention, you have to make a decision within a certain timeframe, but staff queues those issues up for you. It's very rare that we have true emergencies. And one of your strongest powers as a council is to say, we as a council, we as the elected appointed leaders, we're gonna take the time we need and get the information we need to make the decision that's gonna be in the best interest.
Well, the most important thing that I, that I use, of course, is the, the agenda. We follow the agenda and not deviate from it. That controls the, the night.
Yep. Yeah. But if, you know, there's a sense of urgency from a small group and they think you need to do this immediately, I think it's okay from where you sit as elected appointed leader, say, no, you know, I know it's, it might be frustrating people that they're not gonna make a decision tonight, but that's okay. Because we're gonna take the time, exercise our prerogative to make a decision that'll stand the test of time. Sometimes like in land use matters, maybe if you had a really tough public hearing and there's a lot of information and you still have some questions for which it'd be good to have more staff analysis, it's okay to continue that matter, right? Or maybe some nights, it's that intractable, we don't know where council's going on this vote, and it sounds like we need to have more deliberation among council. Maybe the continuance is okay, right? So recognize one of your, once in a while, I gotta make a decision within a limited timeframe, but one of your powers, I think, is to exercise your power to gain information and take the time to further this goal, okay? Recognize that to be effective and also to avoid your liability risk. Recognize you're part of a collective decision-making body, right? Seven members of council, right? And it will, does that mean I got one-seventh of this power, right? And darn it, I'm gonna put on my governmental cloak and I'm gonna go use my one-seventh of my power, right? Is that a good place to be? No, right? Yeah, the, the, when we say council or commission, when we say that in our code, we're talking about the council or the commission as a body, right? Can anybody show me? You know, the mayor has the prerogative and privilege of being the presiding officer. Your chair does as well in dealing with the flow of the meetings and those sorts of things. But when we look in our code, we're not gonna find many ordinances, if any, that say one council member has the power to do this. What does it say? Council has this power. The commission may, right? The council may. So it doesn't translate that you hold a fraction of the power that you can use individually. It means I hold a fraction of the power that we exercise collectively, right? And so from a, how do I look at the job and do a great job in the job? You find collaboration. You find others that are willing to come along with you. Success in the job is about building collaboration and consensus building. Not sure, you know, what's your current, what kind of current legislative matters do you have pending? What are your current final needs?
We're going to have a mural policy of it. I'm not sure how we're gonna, maybe a moratorium on murals. I'm trying to think. There are a bunch of things that we're going to be out.
Yeah. So that, that ties great into what I'm gonna talk about with the quasi-adjudicial. But if I were a council member, and my particular item that I'm very interested in is I think, hey, council members, we need to go in there and rewrite some provisions of the sign code to deal with murals. And I really wanna have a looser policy on murals. I want to enable more of them. I, I, as a legislator, I could beat that drum all day long. But if I can't find three of my fellow members to come with me?
Right.
Is that successful?
No.
Right, right? So we have to appreciate the consensus and collaboration and building aspect of the job. We also have to, and I'm beating my drum, hey, you know, I know we got the work plan, and I know we got our priorities for this year, but I really want us to kind of create space on the agenda for, for murals. I have to also, to be effective as elected appointed official, recognize and respect the decision of the group that if my idea is not getting traction, right, then I don't have the individual power to push that matter forward, right? It can be frustrating sometimes, but that's the give and take of being on a, on a collective body that decides its own priorities and policies. So we have to be respectful enough, you know, frankly, humble enough to say, if my particular priority doesn't get traction, then I need to save it for another time and not pursue it individually in a way that disrupts the organization.
You know, one of the tools that we have in place that seems, it works well for us is our city manager, on a weekly basis, on Wednesdays has, has a director's meeting. And he takes pretty much the majority of everything we're gonna discuss to them. They do a lot of the legwork and they bring it back through him, you know, into our city council for, whether it's an ordinance or whatever. It gives us kind of what their thoughts are, if there's any pitfalls, if they're, you know, if they're good with it. It seems to work well for us. So it kind of flows up to us a lot of times very clean. And we always, you know, there's a lot of times we do have questions, but it seems to work out well for what we do.
Awesome.
And I, I think it's good that we put in work sessions on our off weeks from our council meetings. So everything we're gonna be looking at, we discuss through a work session and prepare for it. So we're prepared for the meeting. I think that's very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, that's very helpful. Michael, any thoughts you want to add?
No.
Yeah, we have to be, then, clear enough with staff. And I, I know that, you know, you've got the work plan, the priorities, the budget, lays the roadmap for the next year. We may get into it and something may preempt those priorities, right? Something, something may come up. You have to commit to the idea of supporting the organization in terms of, well, if we're gonna push on one side of the balloon, where is the air gonna go? And be willing to have those conversations about resourcing as well. Okay. Final part of this overarching suggestion here is recognize that as elected or appointed leaders, part of your oath and part of your job duties is delivering good leadership, right, on behalf of the community. And I've found over the years that it both practically and legally depends on a few core concepts. I'm sure we can make the list longer than I tried to boil it down to my, my top four, selfish one. That, and I've found that if we focus on the few core concepts that are really kind of civics concepts, then, which I've listed on the left-hand side of the slide, that the corresponding legal issues by and large will take care of themselves. So what do I mean by that? If we commit ourselves to openness and transparency, we're gonna have very few issues under the open meetings or open records laws, right? Do we recognize, for example, as elected appointed leaders, that the emails that we write wearing our government official hat, you know, with certain limited exceptions, they're generally public records, right? So we need to understand there's transparency to that aspect of the jobs. Do we commit ourselves to fundamental fairness, right? If we're fair with applicants that come in front of us, if we have a good process, right, then we're gonna have very few problems under the due process laws where people are trying to make legal claims based on some defect in the process by which you made a decision. Commit yourselves to predictability. I think that's very important. Yeah, we got that huge code book. Is it huge? It's not. Yeah, it's a little lot there. And it's got all the rules of the road about how we do business, right? We may find, as policymakers on occasion, we don't like that rule. We don't like that policy. We want to change that ordinance. And that's fine, as long as we do that through the right process. But be very wary of the risk of changing the rules on the fly. You want to be predictable in applying the rules that you have on the books. Probably, you know, it's disconcerting to everyone, but particularly the business community, disconcerting to them if a vibe gets out that says, you know, I was in city hall and I got my permit for this or that, and it was pretty straightforward and easy process. And someone else who perceives that they're in the same situation says, well, it wasn't that easy for me. You know, I had a lot of what I thought were new application requirements. And then when I got to the commission and the council, it seemed like they were interpreting the rules differently. You don't want to be one of those, right? And we, we have them every now and then. But recognize you do have the power to change your roles, right? If you don't like, and we get this too, you know? Something didn't work out. Oh, you know, that piece of the land use code. Something didn't work out, oh, you know, that piece of the land use code led to a result that really wasn't what the community had envisioned. Well, you can go in and tweak the rules, you know, if it was a design or something that you know, height that you didn't, you can go back and change it to general rules, but be wary of doing that kind of thing on the fly. And then finally, I think the most important thing is mutual respect, right? Mutual respect for each other as council and board members. Mutual respect for the staff that we interact with, for the citizens. So I've found over the years, it ain't easy. You're gonna go home, you know, you're gonna have a tough meeting some nights, right? You're gonna have a room full of people, it's gonna be a tough hearing, and it's gonna be a four-three vote, right? But you're in a great place if people who are at that hearing go, they go home and they go, man, I get it now. Council's got a tough job. They had people coming at them from every different direction, you know? This part of the room telling them to do this, and those people telling them to do something different, they were telling you five different things they wanted them to do, and they had to take all that information and meld it into a single decision. But if they say to themselves, you know what? I feel like I was heard, and I feel like it was a fair process, and I really respect the council and the commission for the way they handled that tough issue, what a great place to be. Forget the legal risk, right? What a great place to be in terms of the community of how you've just built trust and respect for how your board, your commission and council operates. The coincidental effect of that is the people that go home and have that epiphany, they're much less likely to go home and say, man, that process was really messed up, and I'm gonna look for some way to challenge it.
The biggest thing that we have is when we have our open meeting at the beginning, where we allow public comment, and the idea behind that is we listen. It's a rare occasion that we will respond back to, and make a, you know, give a response back to whoever's speaking, and that comes up very rarely, but it does come up. So that's the hard part that you, you know, try to figure out what to do, is for the right hour or not, to report, so it's, it does create some, it can create some issues with the public, and they're, like I said, they come forward and they say, I'd like an answer.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, we'll just say, you know, direct them to whoever in staff to help them in that particular issue.
Yeah, it's a little discomforting when someone comes up, and I'm gonna bar you down. What are you gonna do about it?
Yep, yep.
And then be dead silent. Dead silent, waiting, waiting for the answer, right? Have we, you, you allow public comment too at the commission? Yeah. I think one of the things to do is, as a group in a work session or some other time other than right after the public comment, talk about what your norms are around that issue. Do we have agreed that we won't as council members or commission members jump in to respond? Now, sometimes there are comments that are made during public comment period where they say something, and it's just begging for a response, right? But maybe you wait till all the public comments is done. You just thank them for their comments and say, I thank you for your comments, the next person, come on up. And then at the very end, if it's really, the mayor can turn to staff and say, Michael, could you give everyone a quick update on that road project that someone asked about? That helps the flow, reduces the risk of you engaging in a back and forth that might end up taking you off track as a council or commission, right? And it shows everyone that we treat everyone during public comment period equally. What about this hypothetical there? You get, you get three, how many minutes do I get? Three minutes? Ninety seconds? Five. Five.
Just three, notes five.
Five, okay. I'm thirty, we're thirty seconds into it, and Sam's up there during public comment going, you're lousy, you stink, I hate government, you're all crooks. Do we say you're done?
No.
No, right? Remember, now first of all, from a legal perspective, there's no legal obligation to allow for public comment by people not on the agenda, right? But I, what did I say? We got 276 members? I'm pretty sure all 276 members allow for public comment by people not on the agenda, because that's a great place to interact with your community. That's why they expect to hear, you know? And from a legal perspective, there's no, there's hardly no greater form of protective First Amendment speech than to stand up in front of my city council and petition my government to hear me, right? So you don't wanna regulate what they say, right? And that's all the more reason, if it's a tough one, five minutes are done, thank you for your comments, even though you may be thinking something else, but it's thank you for your comments, and you call up the next commenter.
Okay, here's a big question I've, so far, like I said, I've been in my seat for four years, it's not been before me yet, but it's happened in the past, where at what point do they exceed what they can do, or they need to be removed from council chambers? Is there a point?
From our perspective, risk management wise, Sersa, I would not, first, I would never as an elected appointed official to direct the person to be removed from the room. That puts you at individual risk. If they're actually engaging in disorderly conduct, I would let the law enforcement officer who is at the meeting make that judgment call and enforce your, your criminal laws.
That's what I was asking, just at what point do we get, you know, the police to...
Yeah. And, you know, whenever we think of it, this is the world we live in. We've had the sort of, we've had the claims involving people who have stripped down to their underwear during public comment. We have people who have yelled the F-bomb during public comment, right? And from where you sit as elected appointed official, I think your best tactic in the face of that kind of behavior is you take a recess. Just take a recess. That's how you're better protected. Then you can't be accused of taking some action, right? Again, there are criminal laws against disorderly conduct and disrupting a public assembly, but those are for law enforcement officers to make that call on their own. The other kind of third rail of all this, and I don't know where you're at, is in the day, the world we live in, do you have, do you have officer uniform presence at all your meetings?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, most, those communities, you know, and so let them make the call on whether there's a violation of the law. It's typically disorderly conduct. But just to finish my story, stripping down to your underwear in public meetings is not disorderly conduct under the Constitution. Cursing is not unless it's words that speak to an immutable trait, hate speech. And in order to prosecute hate speech, you would have to have a hate speech ordinance. So really, the takeaway is during those five minutes, just recognize, we, we afforded this opportunity, we wanna hear from the community. Once in a while, there's gonna be a sour grape, and it's gonna be, you know, something we didn't wanna hear, but that's, that's the point. That's the point of being allowed to petition your government for grievances, so you wait for the five minutes, and you say thank you and move on. If there really is a law enforcement matter, then law enforcement takes care of it. It's, again, bless you if you have had this issue, and count your lucky stars if you haven't, but there's been like waves of things going on in the front range with, remember it was, it's called the Occupy movement? Remember that group? Groups of protesters who show up at public assemblies, they may not have any particular interest in your issues or not. Where it was big on the front range recently had to deal with protests over oil and gas regulations. But they would show up at the meeting, and they would do all sorts of things that were quite disruptive. But some of them are, you know, quite sophisticated and smart, and they know what the boundary is, and so they would do things that seem to be very disruptive in the meetings, all raise arms like this, cheer at their regular times, stand up and turn their back to the council while that person is speaking, all those kinds of things. Your, your best approach and view of those things is simply to take a recess at a certain point in time, if you're, if you're unable to conduct your council business or your commission business, rather than expose yourself to the risk of, hey, that elected official or that appointed official infringed on my First Amendment rights by ordering me out of the room.
If there's a, is there a point where, let's say, you have a group like that, that even through, as you try to move through your other agenda items, to continue on, that, you know, as a mayor, that I could just stop the meeting altogether and just, just continue the meeting, period?
Yeah, we've had a couple of those, and, yeah, it got so disruptive that the mayor said, council, are you in favor adjourned in the meeting? And they said, yes, let's adjourn. And now it's to the audience, the council meeting is adjourned, we're all going to leave now. The city manager has been asked to stick around for 10 minutes, you know? So if you got something else you wanna stand up and say to each other, that's fine, but the council meeting is adjourned, and the building will be closed in 15 minutes. And that allows everyone to, you know, respectfully wind up and leave, so. We've had a couple of those, not many, not many. Okay. Any other thoughts on that stuff? Did you wanna add anything on the public comment piece?
No, I was gonna say, in your previous slide, it, it said predictability following the laws and the ordinances, and we have rules in place regarding addressing people during the public comment section. It's, it's hard sometimes to not respond.
Yeah.
And, and I know, you know, part of that point is, is consistency, and then the next regularly scheduled meeting, the rule is council can respond, or staff will respond to the concern raised in the previous meeting. But at times, it's just very difficult to, especially for council's constituents, to not, not involve them, but the rule is, the rule is, and anyway, I don't need to...
Yeah, and there's, you know, maybe anxious, anxiety inducing for them, and they're not too sure how council operates, but if they see, if someone sees someone else get a response, and then they don't, that's where we see the most difficulty. So whatever your norm is as council, but we suggest is a good norm, you just take it all in, and even when the person's like waiting for that response, you remind them, this is the public comment period, this is where council receives your comments, only we don't engage or discussion of your issues at this point, so go ahead and wrap up. You know, it may be that one of us might have a comment at the end, and if it really is one of those, it screams out for wanting the room to just know, we got it, or manager can give us an update, or it's coming in a future agenda, then when it's all done, you make that, that little comment, right?
Usually what I do is if they're looking and demanding kind of an answer if there's something, I usually direct them, like I mentioned, to the city manager or somebody. I usually say is, if I figure like we have, in instance, the last meeting is, I will remind the audience that it's, it's not typical that I allow, you know, the council to comment, so it's not a typical situation, but in this case, I will allow it. That's typically the way I, and I allow the city council members to comment at this city. Then we have that situation arise last meeting.
All right, all right. Yeah, and then you get the ones you clearly have no power to, just to wrap up that, you know, you get the person who stands up and says, I, I got this ticket here from the municipal court, and what's council gonna do about it? And that's a kind of a training moment too, you know, for the constituents. But I think it helps your flow the most if you save any council responses until all the comments are in. All right. Suggestion two is a bit of a pivot, but particularly for the new folks. Where is one of my new council members? Anyone? New reelected in November?
He was reelected in November.
Really? All right, all right, so you're...
Sorry, council official.
Your first question, the last after you got reelected was, can I get sued in this job? And the answer is?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Of course you can. But just as a refresher, I just wanted to remind you what your protections are, and then the risk that follows where you can lose those protections, okay? And just, this turns a little bit more legalistic, but I just wanted to kind of check in again and remind you kind of what the high-level response to that question is. And first, what I'm talking about here is just whether, you know, can I, as elected official, be sued in state court where somebody can try to get money out of me for something that I did because I'm an elected official or an appointed official, okay? And in Colorado, we got this nifty law called the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, and what it says is that the city, and by extension, its insurer, that's us, will defend you and pay judgments entered against you for acts or omissions as a government official. Sounds pretty good so far. Yeah. There's a hook, right? So long as, so long as you are acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner, okay? Those are the kind of two nifty phrases that can cause problems, right? You say, well, what do you mean, scope of employment? I'm an elected appointed official. Well, that doesn't apply to me, I'm not an employee. No, it does. That's just a phrase used in the statute. My real takeaway for you all is what it means for you is that you need to appreciate and stay within the boundaries of the job description of an elected or appointed official, okay? Easy examples. Who writes tickets in the municipal courts in this organization?
Police.
Police, please. So who doesn't? Yeah, like an appointed official, right? And that's, I mean, it's more than obvious on its face, it's also true implicitly, right? Because we have seen, you know, over the years, kind of a jacked up claim where somebody says, well, you know, it was actually, this ticket came out because there were some appointed officials kind of lurking behind the scenes, and they directed code enforcement to issue me a ticket, right? Another easy example, do you have business licensing scheme? Who issues the business licenses? Clerk. Clerk, so who doesn't?
Council.
Council, yeah. So we have claims built on the idea of someone says, well, I didn't get my business license renewed, and we go, well, what do you mean? You know, that's in the clerk's purview, and she, well, and then this evidence comes in that suggests, well, there are other people lurking behind the scenes, you know, trying to make sure that that permit didn't get approved or didn't get... And so remember, sometimes, that's what we call delegation, right? Certain functions have been assigned to administrative staff, and we have to be comfortable, it's a two-way street, you have to be comfortable with the fact that sometimes your administrative kind of staff is gonna make a decision, city manager, you probably also have the decision-making authority, is gonna make a decision that might be unpopular, right? We don't like, but if we've already assigned that function to administrative staff, and they're the final word on that, then they're the final word on it. And conversely, you know, it runs the other way too. If council makes a decision and it's contrary to staff's recommendation on some policy issue, then staff has to understand, well, that was council's prerogative, right? So everyone has to understand and honor the job description. That's what that deal is about. What about this willful and wanton concept? Right? You're protected as long as you're not acting willfully and wantonly. That's just a fancy word. The actual legal definition, more or less, is conduct that is intentionally designed to harm someone and done with reckless disregard for their rights. That's pretty fancy. I like to just call it this. It's bad stuff. Don't do bad stuff. That's it. Don't do bad stuff, and you don't have to worry about this phrase, right? The other way of phrasing it is, don't use your, this, you most get risk of this for individual things. If you misperceive that you have power as an individual that you don't have, and you wear that cloak of governmental authority, and you try to do something that's gonna harm the third party, and you do it for the wrong reasons, that's kind of bad stuff, right? I always feel like these are my Grim Reaper slides, but I'm gonna hand them up on silver lining, right? So what that means is, if it's willful and wanton conduct, it's usually individual bad conduct, right? And that can result in a loss of your governmental immunity. The double whammy is, it can also, right, because you can, you can lose your immunity and your protection, because it says we have to, the city has to defend you and pay judgments as long as you're not acting willful and wantonly. The other thing you can do is it can result in a loss of insurance coverage. Remember, the insurance program is designed to protect you as a government official, right? Not things that you weren't supposed to do as a government official, right? And the typical public official's liability policy says, hey, we'll cover you for wrongful acts. Like if someone alleges that you violated your civil rights, we'll protect you and we'll defend that case, right? As long as it show, you know, as long as you weren't acting willfully and wantonly, right? So they, our policies follow that same kind of course and scope. In the worst-case situation, it's possible that if you engage in willful and wanton conduct, then you could have punitive damages awarded against you, and those aren't insurable under Colorado law. So to sum it up, in the worst-case situation, it's doing bad stuff to harm someone for the wrong reasons, doing it as an individual, right? And then getting dinged for that because you were acting in a willful and wanton manner, and in that situation, you wouldn't have insurance and you'd be responsible for your own defense and judgment. Now, having said that, we all have a great common sense radar for where the bad stuff is, and we're gonna stay away from it. We're gonna recognize it long before we see it, right? But as a collective team too, right? If we see bad stuff on the horizon, we're gonna eyes up, say, hey, we, we ought not to do that. We need to step back, we need to talk for less. Am I getting in hot water? Are we doing something, am I doing something I shouldn't be doing, right? And you'll be just fine.
How do you handle this situation? This has happened to me, last couple of years, had a lady who tried to sue the city and sued me personally over an issue that I had nothing to do with. And she left Trinidad.
Yeah.
And she was sending me threats. And for a couple of years, I've not seen anything this year, but it seemed like every January, I got a threat. As a matter of fact, I've talked to Les about that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I said, this time around, if it comes around, we probably need to figure out a way to handle it. So I've not heard from her yet.
Yeah.
Thank God she's gone way altogether, but in a situation, how do we handle this? I know I talked about it earlier.
Yeah. You wanna make a comment about that?
Well, I was just gonna say, she was kind of a lunatic fringer who was wanting to.
Willful and wanton, right there.
Who felt like she was entitled to have a business, a consumption club that we did not allow.
Right, right.
And she was making not so thinly veiled threats that she was gonna sue mayor, sue the city. And, excuse me, we were kind of dealing with that as it went along. But everything was by the book, dealing with her, advising her, not, you know, entreating her with respect and trying to answer her concerns rationally to the extent that we could.
Yeah, and you always wanna stay at that level, right? No matter what you get, you might get something that's way out there or, and you're even gonna go. Well, my reaction is, this is an attempt to bait me into something. I wanna take the high road.
She went as far as, you know, making threats that she was turning me into the FBI to file a lawsuit under the RICO law.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, a couple of things in this regard. Couple of things in this regard. Sometimes at the end of the day, when somebody believes they might have a claim against you, there's nothing you can say that's gonna convince them otherwise and if they have it, they'll re-get it and then we'll defend it.
I just need to respond.
Yeah, and so, and sometimes it's always, you know, you get to a certain point where someone hammers the same point and you responded and there's no new information to respond to. At some point, you give up responding, right? We look at those and go, sometimes if they've made a new statement that does require, we set the record straight, we might send a self-serving letter. Right, there are different kind of shades of this. If it's a personal attack and a personal tort against you as an elected appointed official as a person, sometimes it may be this isn't related to your governmental authority, they're trying to attack you as a person. I've found and I've seen elected appointed officials go out and on their own, have a defamation attorney write a tactical letter. But from where you said, as a governmental actor, I think it's always important to just take those one step at a time, right? Always take the high road, always remind them that whatever you're concerned about, this is how we did that, this is how we reached our decision. In the ones where things are getting squared off, sooner or later, they end up in a letter that says, we disagree with your position, we have nothing further to say.
I just bring that up because, you know, at some point in today's climate across this country, we never know what kind of people we're going to encounter and it could happen to any one of us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, at that one end of the spectrum, if it, if you do feel that your safety is threatened and it is that kind of threat, right? Then you ought to either call law enforcement or you ought to be thinking about civil protection order, right? So that's in the extreme cases, that comes up every now and then, right?
Have you ever, in all your years of experience, have you ever had an incident where the government immunity didn't help?
Yes.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've had a number of claims where there've been allegations of willful and wanton conduct and we've either defended it or we've found that there was willful and wanton conduct or the fact pattern was such that we concluded that this is not a good case. It doesn't look like there was willful and wanton conduct and it ought to be resolved before we let it get that issue, yeah.
Sam, would you please, I don't know if you're about to leave this subject or not, but would you please emphasize that willful and wanton is one standard. It is egregious misconduct, it is a way to avoid, like you said, avoid coverage and avoid everything. But outside the scope is still that those are actions that are not covered by insurance. If a councilperson or board member is acting outside the scope of their duties. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but outside the scope involves things like breaching confidentiality of an executive session, violating quasi-judicial considerations at a very high level due process degree.
Yeah.
Like licensing, things of that nature. If someone has a glaring conflict of interest or is said they're not going to be fair, emolument clause, not following legal advice.
Right.
Possibly, you agree that all those things?
Yeah, that can set up that type of claim, right? You can do things that are outside the scope of your job and create a legal issue without creating that willful and wanton legal issue, right? So if we have, for example, a code of ethics that says, thou shall not participate in the event of a conflict of interest and we participate anyway, right? They may not be able to meet that higher burden of willful and wanton conduct, but they may be able to show that you acted outside the course and scope, right? We see this sometimes in auto liability claims where if somebody says, well, I borrowed a city vehicle and I ran it in personal error and I got in an accident, now city ensures to defend me. You say, wait a second, you were never supposed to be driving the vehicle in the first case, so what you did was outside the course and scope, we don't cover that, that kind of thing. Outside of course and scope, from a collective basis lends itself more to council or commission was making or exercising some authority it didn't have and that can still translate to a claim, right? You do have rules, less mentioned confidentiality. And these are rules that the council put in place to regulate itself as a group, so we're bound by them. But you have rules about honoring confidentiality. So if any one member breaches that confidentiality, right, that'll go sideways and the potential claim against that one individual is you acted contrary to the organization, you acted outside the scope by doing something that the code says you should not be doing, right? Do you wanna add?
No, no, please.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so that's about it on that. I'm gonna flip it around and give you some tips, right, for staying clearly within the lane here on this stuff. Understand the job description and stay within it, right? Before you act, particularly if you have the idea that as elected or appointed official, I wanna do something myself, make sure you're authorized to act. And the answer may well be, you don't have authority to act, right? Which then translates it into the practical advice, then don't do it, don't do it. If it's something only the council or commission can do, then wait till the next council meeting, right? And spend your energy convincing three other members, right? And getting legal advice on whether you can do it, those kinds of things. Recognize that as elected appointed officials, whoops now, I don't think I can pick it backwards. There we go. Wait, go there. 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 All right. Recognize that as elected appointed officials, you primarily do the job by meeting in this room, right? And acting as a group to vote on matters that come before the board, the council, the commission. And from a liability standpoint, that's a great place to be. It's very hard for someone to say, I'm gonna sue you individually, mayor, for something the council did last week.
Right.
Because your reaction is, natural reaction is, well, what are you talking about? That was a council decision, how can I have, you know, done anything that exposes me to individual liability? And the other thing going on there is there are all sorts of additional immunities that apply to you, like the legislative immunity, quasi-judicial immunity. So you have strength and protection when you act as a group, okay? Think in terms of we, not I, right? If you, again, if you have the I, you know, rest of the commission be damned, I'm gonna do this, that's a risk. That's a red flag for you, right? Be particularly cautious once the council or commission has voted on a matter. You know, if you feel there's a need to change something, maybe it can be changed, but only through the proper process, right? And also recognize that some decisions can't be changed. Council votes on a contract tonight and tomorrow we get the contractor on board and they start working for us, then we don't have the power to just tell them, you're out. You know, if they've breached the contract or if we have some other right to terminate the contract, yes. But we can't interfere with those things. All right, let me wrap up this and I have a couple of other practical points on this. You go into this suggestion thinking, well, why is this sorts of guy up here harping on this idea of role discipline and understanding the job? Here are some real life examples. Add a couple more that show the kind of risks that you can run individually. So we get a lot of employment cases. Employment, civil rights and police liability, that's our, those are our three big baskets of things we handle at Sosa. But once in a while, we give you some employment cases. You know, we look at the org chart, that's bar an example. Let's say someone in the public works department, like a kind of a line equipment operator gets fired. So we look at the org chart and we say, all right, let's go talk to the supervisor, because that's the supervisor's the one with hiring and firing authority. And we say to the supervisor, okay, getting ready to defend this claim for wrongful discharge against the city, tell us why you fired this person. And the supervisor says, I didn't want to fire him. Is that a good start? Yeah, there's a few more questions and you, maybe what's lurking behind this fact pattern is the supervisor says, well, I didn't really wanna get rid of him, you know, but there's some other people that didn't like him, you know, from the staff that didn't like him and a couple of department directors said, hey, you ought to get rid of this guy. And then there's elected appointed officials said, hey, you know, that guy's a jerk, get rid of him. Not a good place to be. And that's, that whole risk factor is about role discipline and understanding that in your structure, you have a council manager, form of government, where all personnel matters downstream of the city manager are vested in the city manager. And so that's not anywhere where you wanna be, right? Another example, and this is a real life example I had many years ago. You know, sometimes you're gonna make a tough decision, it's gonna be frustrating if you were on the short end of that. So I had a project once with the council and it was a tough land use case and it was a four-three vote. With the four-three vote in favor of the development, the developer's done with the city council process, they can go get their building permits now. And my mayor was on the three side of the four-three. A couple of days later, the mayor goes over to the building department and says, by the power vested in me as mayor, I direct you not to issue building permits. Good idea? Bad idea? Yeah, but you can imagine the impression that left on the staff person too, right? What do I do with that? So recognize that these are risk factors, okay? Less of a legal risk, but I think as important, if not more important, is a common understanding among your membership about what we do individually. Do you have that period in the meeting where you go down the dais and everyone gives a report?
Yep.
Yeah. And so that's kind of, you know, what have you been doing since the last meeting? We go down the dais and, you know, one of the members says, well, I did this. And if everybody's reaction is, you did what? That's time, that's the kind of issue that's in the council's wheelhouse. I mean, staff can support finding you a forum to talk about those things, but it's really in your wheelhouse as a council or commission to have that discussion about what are our expectations for each other when we go out and do things on our own, on behalf of the city, right? Yeah, it can be as mundane as just supporting something, right? Like if we, as councils, say, let's have good discussion to move this issue along, let's have the mayor and the manager go talk to the county. Well, we want the mayor and manager to be supported when they go and do that, not when he comes back and says, well, I went and talked to the county and I said this and that to him and everyone else goes, you did what? Yeah, so it's having those systems in place to support each other about what our expectations are for those couple of things we do individually. The other thing I did want to emphasize is, none of this is to undersell or fail to recognize a very important point of being an elected appointed official. We get that you have to have relationships and build relationships with each other, right? And none of this is to discount that, right? It's, but it's also to elevate the idea that when we still have those, you know, we still have coffee with the one other member, we'll talk about meetings in a minute. But all of the issues that are in your power eventually come back to you as a commissioner or a council. So be supportive of a way of communicating that supports that and supports each other so that we're not finding ourselves, you know, more often than we'd like to be in this situation where someone's saying, you did what? You know, we as councils, that's not a good idea. So, okay. Any thoughts on that?
What is the situation, give you a good example, you know, for instance, this last week, Rusty and I, Mike and I, my, my, we're in Denver at the Action 22 Days. And of course, you meet a lot of legislators and you just happen to meet somebody that there's a question that has been, you know, coming up.
Yeah.
And you find that legislator and you wanna talk to them about a particular issue.
Right.
You gotta handle it sometimes at that point.
Yep, yep. Yeah, if they're looking for the, what's the city's view, right? Yeah, you have a number of options. You could say, well, as the mayor, my view is this. And we haven't, as the council, we haven't had a chance to talk about it. We're gonna have our legislative workshop and we'll follow up and let you know.
Just take advantage of that particular situation when it does arise.
Yeah, I find more and more, particularly with so much going on at the state level, that a lot of our members are doing legislative work sessions to figure, you know, agree with each other about what our legislative priorities are and decide these are the six or ten or three items that we really wanna be prepared for and be proactive about and then get involved with the legislators on that. But if you're in that situation where they ask you and it's not something that you've had a chance, I think you wanna build that relationship. But I think to be fair to your council, you would probably also tell them, look, we haven't talked about it fully. I think this would be the city's reaction. We're, you know, kind of a two-way street, you know? If we can get with your staff and they can keep us informed whether they need our help on this bill, we certainly can get to our agenda and come to a council position on how we can help you if you have a particular stake one way or the other in this bill too, yeah. And I don't think, you know, you tell me, is that getting ahead or behind council in, you know, purporting to espouse a position of the council? I think it's a little bit conditional.
A lot of times, there's, you know, some of these issues are something that has been on the minds of city council already.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, you know, we've had this, these discussions.
Yeah.
And we know that we need to try to do something in case of that, the situation might arise.
Yeah, and it may, yeah, your position may have already been reflected in some annual discussions.
Exactly.
Yeah, we have some members in, as the city attorney, we had some, and it's a matter of style too, you know? From where you sit is the primary face of those issues. You're gonna put something out there and then tell your council, you did that and look for that support and it's there. Or am I facing, why did you say that? Then it's a matter of, okay, let's break it down a little more and spend more time on the legislative agenda, right? Okay, suggestion three, protect the city's confidence is, we're gonna talk in a minute about how the primary expectation is that you do things, most of our work in public meetings and public view. But recognize that there are some areas where confidentiality is not only legally defensible, but it's in the best interest of the city, right? And that's when we have an executive session, right? Remember that under the city charter, executive sessions are only authorized for a limited number of topics. Things like purchase and sale of real estate, legal advice, certain personnel matters and a couple of others. Recognize that you have to follow a very detailed process to go into executive session, so be patient with the staff while they go through those bits and so on. But make sure that your systems for identifying and protecting confidential information are well established, right? And to hit all these points, let's run through this scenario and let me ask you for your feedback on this. I think the best way I can illustrate these points is this scenario. Let's say we're in executive session, so we've already made the proper motion and so on. In executive session, council develops a strategy for negotiating the purchase of an old ice rink. If we can buy it, we're gonna develop it as a public rent. We've got a confidential appraisers report with us and the executive session states the value is between two seventy-five and three twenty-five. The council consensus is that the mayor and city manager should go meet with the landowner and negotiate for up to three hundred thousand. Councilperson Jones sees the landowner the next day at the coffee shop, right? Human nature being what it is, says, hey, we were talking about your property last night and the city's willing to pay you three hundred thousand and I think they might go as high as three twenty-five. Do we have problems? Yeah, let me dispatch with the legal concern first. Who's the claimant in this? Is there a claimant in this?
Yes.
Who was harmed?
The city.
Who's harmed? Are we gonna sue ourselves? We might, we might, but probably not. We might. Yeah, the city's the injured party here, right? But the real problem is if we thought that tonight is important enough to have an executive session, right? Then we, as the people holding that executive session, have to commit to each other's eyes up and it must be important enough to keep it confidential tomorrow. I know it isn't easy, sometimes people are waiting at the door at the end of the meeting, what's talking about? Right? I find, particularly on matters subject to negotiation, that a good tool is, usually have your executive sessions at the end of the meeting. It's late potentially and, you know, kind of looking, let's wrap this up. But I, a good tool I see is, when you're doing something that's subject to negotiation, before you adjourn that executive session, you go, all right, of all the confidential information that we've talked about during this executive session, which bits of information, if any, leave this room and who are our spokespeople? And then the rest of the people in that discussion honor that. You owe it to each other. I think the real injured party here is Jones. Because Jones is the one that has to look the mayor or the other council members in the eye the next time, once word gets out about this and say, trust me, you can trust me. Right, I'm a respected member of this body or what have you. But wait a second, how did this word get out then, right? So it's really setting aside the legal risk here. It's really about building trust with each other on how we handle confidential information. So I find, negotiation ones are tough because we got different perspectives and sometimes you need a lot of staff background to queue a matter up, right? But just agree on what's confidential and honor that. Two other points that I mentioned here is get an appraisal. So I'm picking on property matters. I know they're expensive, but if you're buying or selling real estate, I always recommend getting either an appraiser, appraisers report, an appraiser estimate of value or the best information that staff can put together for you because it'll protect you from accusations that you're paying too much, right? Or that you're selling for too little. And from where you said, as elected officials, it's a good little tool to have. Last thing is remember on negotiation matters, you may have like four or five executive sessions on a real estate transaction, but the night that you put it on the agenda for the decision, that's the first time the public gets to see it, right? So serve yourselves well by telling a little more of a story, you know? Nothing disconcerting from a transparency perspective where, like, yeah, I don't want to agenda his ordinance to purchase a property and then the discussion starts and somebody says, well, we've talked about. And then the discussion starts and somebody says, "Well, we've talked about this quite a bit. I just moved to approve." Not much of a legal risk, you followed all legal procedures, but your community probably wants to, and this is your opportunity to shine and explain why we got to this point regarding this purchase. I think that serves you well.
Fisher Peak was a prime example of that. There was a lot of executive sessions leading up to, before it come in front of the legislature.
Yeah, I think the public appreciates that and it shows them that you're using executive sessions effectively and so on. So that's that one, that's suggestion four. All right, now I can't even get it to move. All right, suggestion four, honor transparency. I'm just going to touch real briefly on this. I want to talk about the open meetings law, just a refresher. There's a lot in the open meetings law, but here's the primary rule for you all as elected appointed officials. So we got this nifty law in Colorado, Colorado Open Meetings Law. It says whenever three, you got seven on the planning commission, right? Whenever, I mean, seven on council, whenever three or more members of council gather to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public. The second half of the rule is if, if it's a meeting where a fourth member will be there or you're going to take some kind of action, then you also have to give full and timely notice. And that simply staff takes care of that piece. That's posting your agenda, right? So that, that's it? That's easy, right? No?
No.
That's it, right?
But the big question comes into play there is, let's say you're at a community event and more than three show up.
Yep. Who hosts the barbecue? Mayor, do you host the barbecue? The council barbecue. The council barbecue, all seven council members are there. Is that an open meeting? Does that require the public council right to be present? Yeah, the statute expressly does not apply to social gatherings or even to chance meetings where four of you find yourself in the coffee shop.
As groceries.
Yeah, but remember, those are there as a safe harbor. They, the caveat to those is as long as that chance meeting or that social gathering, right, does not turn into a discussion of public business. Yeah, so at the mayor's barbecue, you know, I don't know why you'd want to talk about him, but if you're going to talk about the Broncos or the Rockies, right, that's fine. But it can't become a meeting to discuss, "Oh, let's talk about next week's budget." You know, now you're having a discussion of public business, so, okay? So those are two caveats.
Good question. Whereas last week, there was supposed to have been another lady that, one of our other councilwomen that was supposed to go with us, you know, to Denver. And if that case, you know, we would have posted that.
Yeah.
That, as long as it's posted, that's okay, correct?
Yeah, the law attaches to the discussion by members of the public body, right? So sometimes you can get in a trap of over noticing. Like if, we have some members who will do what they call a sunshine calendar and they'll put on that calendar every event that the council's going to go to. And they'll post it at the front of the government offices and they'll say, "Easter Sunday, Easter egg hunt." Right? Because they know that all the council's going to be there helping the kids with the Easter egg. It can kind of whipsaw a little bit because somebody will come up and say, you know, again, God bless you if you have this situation, but somebody will come up and say, "Does that mean I have to go to the Easter egg hunt because council's going to discuss my issue?" Right? No, that's not what we intend, so be careful. It attaches to the discussion. So if the three of you went to Denver just to hear the state legislative report and you weren't actually having a discussion of something going on in Trinidad, then you wouldn't legally have to notice that, but you take care of the risk by giving notice, right? Yeah, yeah, the pesky part, that's why I said it looks so easy, right? The pesky part of this is the state law says whenever three or more of you gather to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public, but it doesn't define what public business is. What do you think it is? Anything that's in the policy, this is my simple way of putting it, anything that's in the policymaking wheelhouse of the council. So if it's a discussion of any pending policy issues that you have going on, that's going to trigger what the law is intended to provide transparency to.
So if we're on our way up, we have a scheduled meeting with the state's attorney general and we want to talk to them about the opioid crisis and what they're going to do in Trinidad, that does not fall within that wheelhouse, correct?
Well, as in informing things you might do locally?
Well, that's what we would like to see done and have funding that, and, you know, what's the state going to do to help fund, you know? I mean, how does that fall in there?
Well, that funding would come probably back, if you're talking about state funding back to the city, then we are probably talking about a policy matter.
Do the lawsuit through the big pharmacy. We don't know if that funding's going to come to all or what it's going to be. I mean, how would that fall?
Yeah, well, on your hypothetical, if three of us want to go and talk with the state AG and we know that at the local level, we'd like to pursue some policy objective on that basis, then I think conservatively I would notice that as a meeting.
Or requesting, requesting help.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Or even better, tell them to come on down here and do their presentation to your community.
But I mean, if it's a car ride and there are four people, like, let's say in a car, and you post that, then the public is still not going to know what was discussed.
Right.
So the better, the better practice is to assure everybody that the public matters are not going to be discussed while traveling up there. But it does seem in Councilman Goodall's example, if they're going and they're receiving information from the attorney general, that it's not really a public discussion, not going to be kind of split hairs.
Right, but you'd be okay on the defense of that because you're not having a discussion with your fellow commissioners. It attaches to your discussion of your local public bodies' public policy matters. And we did actually have a case on that. It does kind of relate to that state issue. Two minutes for this overview of this case. This is a Colorado Supreme Court case. And I like to tell the story because we should have known things may not have worked out as well. Because the place where they had a meeting was at a restaurant called The Hideaway. But here's, this illustrates the point. So this was, the defendant was, the other reason I like telling you is that the defendant was not a municipality, it was a county, okay? It's not a source of member, right? But it was an accusation that the county commissioners went to this restaurant called The Hideaway and had an illegal meeting. The meeting was actually convened by the state. It involved a mine within this county. And the meeting was called by the state to give an update on the mine's compliance with their state mining department. And so people who were opposed to the mine, opposed to the county's accommodation of the mine, wanted to get the political traction out of accusing the state officials of violating the open meetings law by going to this meeting, right? And so the county was able to defend that case by saying and showing, not just saying, but showing that when they went to that meeting at The Hideaway, it was a presentation by state officials regarding the state permit. We as county commissioners did not actively participate in the discussion. We did not turn to each other and say, "Hey, that's a good idea. We ought to do, take this issue back home and talk about it on our county commissioner agenda." Right? So they show that they did not actively participate in the discussion and it did not involve their own policymaking matters. So, but when they did have a county issue, like compliance with the county codes or compliance with county permits, those all have to occur in a duly noticed, duly called, open county commissioners meetings. So that's what happened at The Hideaway restaurant. Unless it's on a good point, you know, if we're traveling or we're going somewhere solely for education to receive communications one way, then we need to honor that principle and not have side discussions. Comes up at CML, too, because a lot of our members will go to the CML conference and there'll be a majority of the board there and they'll be having dinner or they'll be meeting with each other on the side and they'll come back to roost back home sometimes where someone will say, "Hey, I think you had a secret meeting up at CML." And you've got to be in a good place to testify that, hey, I went there and I went to educational programs. We didn't discuss any pending policy matters. We did all that back home at our council meeting or a board meeting.
Give you a good example, you know, Rusty brought a good, a good thought, you know? For instance, we wanted to talk to, you know, the people up there about the opioid issues we met with the AG's office and stuff. This has been an ongoing issue and an ongoing concern about how to get help down here.
Yeah.
So, you know, does that mean that we would have to post something each time that we're going to talk to them or it's already been implied that that is a general concern of council as a whole already on particular issues?
Yeah, there's no concept on the open meetings law for a rolling notice that's good all the time. Yeah, you've got to give a specific time and place and you have to include agenda information where possible.
If there's more than, more than three or more.
More than three.
This time there was only two.
There was only two.
There was only two.
I have a, I have a question about The Hideaway here.
Yeah.
So if they would have sat there and talked back and forth to each other and said, "Hey, we need to take this up back to our people," then it would have been wrong. But if they would have left that discussion alone and then come back here to the council and discussed it openly, then it would have been right.
Yeah, yeah, and the organic way that thing might come up is, you know, at the next meeting, they may have turned, two is a two council commissioners, they have one, three members of the county commission, so the quorum is two. They turn to their fellow commissioners and say, "Hey, attended the state's update on the state permit. I'd like us to put on the agenda, you know, our issues so we can talk about the mine at our next public meeting."
It's just so long as they don't discuss it before they're in the council set.
Right. At an open meeting.
Don't participate.
Notice open meeting. Okay, last piece on meetings is to recognize that under state law, a meeting is any kind of gathering convened by three or more members of the council or commission to discuss public business, whether by phone, in person, or by email. So email can also trigger meeting compliance issues. And that's what this one handout is for, to be respectful of your time. I'm not going to unpackage all that, but I, what I did was put that on paper here, my one-page handout of Sam's suggestions of dos and don'ts for elected officials and appointed officials on use of email. Just need to be cognizant that if we're using email as part of our job as elected officials and same concepts apply and we can trigger open meeting requirements, right, by email. So if, you know, five council members are all trading emails about the budget that's on tonight's agenda and we're, you know, horse trade, will you support this? Will you support, do we have a meeting issue? Yeah, we have a meeting compliance issue, okay? So that discusses that. It's a very effective tool. I don't mean to be anti-technology, but as government officials, we need to understand that our use of email does trigger both meeting issues and open requisitions.
Don't hit reply all.
Don't hit reply all. Now, Michael's going to send, you know, the law is not concerned with, Michael sends, "Okay, I heard council's comments last night that you wanted a special work session." And he sends an email to all seven of you and says, "What dates are you available?" And all of a sudden, seven replies, the law's not concerned with that. It's kind of administrative, right? But if it's, you know, what does council think about tonight's ordinance discussions? That's why he's probably putting, in some technique, everyone has different techniques, but some technique of like, "This is FYI only. Please do not reply all to ensure compliance with meeting requirements. Do not reply all. Staff will be prepared to discuss this on Monday night." And that's, that's sending the signal to you all, it's cool, we got it, just an FYI. All right, suggestion five, honor due process. There's a handout on this, too. But you know, you've got a fascinating job because sometimes you're just legislators making policy, right? You kind of wear a hat as a council member, it's got at least three science suits. Sometimes you're a legislator, but when you're in that legislative role, you're making general policy kind of in the abstract, right? But there's other times when you actually decide cases, applications. And we typically know it because it's on the agenda and it says, "Public hearing" and we got a specific applicant in front of us, right? And that's when we're making decisions on an application or a case that affects someone's specific property rights, right? And for council, that's mostly zoning and land use decisions, I think, right? Do you do some licensing, too?
Yep, yep, there's lots.
Yep, lots. That's where you're not acting as a legislator, making general rules. You're now taking the laws that are on the books, our city rules, and applying them to a specific individual. And when you're doing that, you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. Throw away the quasi, you're really acting like a judge, just like a judge. And that's where that due process requirement comes in under the due process clause, okay? Let's break it down just a little bit more. So a legislative act, right, that just reflects public policy of a permanent or general nature. It's not normally restricted to any one person. It's prospective. Tonight, we're just going to change our animal control ordinance in general. Applies to everybody. I noticed that recently you adopted a new sign code. You didn't have an applicant in front of you. You were just making changes to the rules generally, right? That's when you're acting like a legislator, think state legislator, right? But when you take those general rules and apply them to a specific person, that's when these new rules apply, okay? Quasi-judicial act determines the rights or obligations of a specific person or entity. That's your applicant. What are our due process requirements? Just like any other judge, when you're in that role, you're required to make your decision based on the evidence that's presented to you at the council or commission public hearing. And your decision has to be reached by applying the city's criteria to that particular case, right? And we also have to have a notice public hearing. So due process is all about. We have to give notice, we have to hold a hearing, and we have to have the decision that's based on a record, right? And the decision has to be made by a fair and impartial decision maker. Who are our judges?
Counsel.
That's it? You're the judge. That's it? That's it? That's the due process clause in a nutshell.
Senator.
Yes, sir.
Would you agree with me if there was an order commission that did not follow the rules, did not afford the applicant due process?
Yeah.
That would be outside the scope?
Yeah, I didn't, when I went back through our liability risk, I didn't touch on federal claims other than to kind of just broadly mention civil rights claims. So, due process clause, what am I entitled as an applicant, right? I want to rezone my property and you guys have the right to make the decision of whether I can do it or not. What do you owe me? A public hearing with notice, right? You can't meet without me there and say, "Deny." And you can't just say, "Deny because I don't like them," that kind of stuff. That's all embedded in the due process clause, right? So the risk factor of that is if you don't provide due process, you can be subject to a civil rights claim. And you have protection against that, they call it qualified immunity, okay? You have protection against a civil rights claim as long as you are not violating the constitutional rights of an individual of which you either knew, right, or should have known, right? So we all know when we have a zoning case, we have to give the property owner notice, right? Easy example, what if we don't give him notice?
No people ask that.
Yeah. And are we violating his clearly established right? Sure, you all just told me he's obviously, you have to give him notice, right? So that's where our qualified immunity under federal law can drop away and we could be sued individually for violation of constitutional rights. That's the 19 section, they call them section 1983 claims. That's an attempt by a claimant to pursue individual liability claims against state actors for violating constitutional rights. Such as First Amendment, freedom of speech, right, equal protection, freedom of religion, due process. Not the sexiest one on the list. Most people say, you know, First Amendment, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, right? Second Amendment, well, due process is right up there and it's the same risk factor, right?
I've got a question. Let's say you have a council member that, because of a particular personal issue that they have.
Yeah.
And it's a licensing issue.
Right.
It comes up, you know, several times during the year. And that, and everybody knows that person's going to vote no, no matter what.
Yeah.
So it's not really, they're not, you know, giving due process. Should that person abstain from a vote?
I think you have to be impartial.
But we know that that person's not going to be impartial.
I sound like one. I'm just, I'm just going to refrain.
It's not what it was.
Yeah, I'm just going to take, I'm just going to take your hypothetical at face value.
Ever since the last election.
Yeah, that it's agreed and provable that they're, they're not part, that they're not impartial.
Correct.
The answer is you ought not to participate because you're impairing the decision of the bodies. We're in a, let's say we got a liquor authority hearing, each side liquor members?
Yep.
That's a new license application and we have a nice hearing, good notice, good process, comments by the neighbors, comments by the applicant, the obligatory petitions passed around. All right, and we come back and the mayor says, "All right, council, that was a good discussion. Let's talk about how we're going to decide this." And somebody says, "I'm going to vote no because I don't drink."
Good example.
Is that a violation of due process? Yeah, yeah. This part of the job is where we have to set aside our own personal bias, our own personal policy objectives, our own personal views. Going back to my other side, we are duty bound to make the decision based on the rules that are in place. And there are rules that are in place. Like in the liquor licensing world, the applicant has to be of good moral charity character. They can't have, you know, five convictions for felony tax evasion. have, you know, five convictions for felony tax evasion, that's a good basis for denial, right? Or the rule says it's got to be 500 feet from the school, and they want to put it across the street, well, that's a good basis for denial, but the fact that you don't drink is not a good basis for denial, right? And so maybe that translates to this scenario, but it's the part of the job that says, I gotta put aside my own personal preferences, and no matter how disfaceful, I think the law has developed on what the criteria have to be, I have to apply those criteria.
In this particular.
And if you can't do that, yeah.
In this particular case, that particular council member would actually come out and say, this is the way I've done it, I'm sticking to my guns.
Yeah.
And would that be a time when I should advise that councilperson, if it does arise again, to say, you know, I advise that you not vote on this particular issue and abstain? What's your direction?
Yeah, you know, in the practical defense of those cases, if you get that errant comment, and it's on the transcript, and one person said it, the way we defend that case is, we try to argue that person wasn't speaking for council, right? But we try to inform that person, because we want them to succeed as council, and we don't want them to be exposed, or them to expose the decision of the group. So we continue with the educational piece. I think the other practical way is, it develops on the record, is if that person says, I'm gonna vote no for the wrong reasons, right? Then what happens is, other people will make statements that'll help temper that risk. They'll say, oh, I'm sorry, council member, but that's not a valid reason for voting this, you know, just a reminder that the rules that apply, you know, we're kind of constrained here, we just need to act off what the clerk has given us as the criteria, right? And that marginalizes that. But if it happens again and again and again, just to take the hypothetical to the side conclusion, I had just, you know, we've got educational pieces, but maybe you're not cut out to be a quasi-judge if you don't understand the due process clause. Most people understand the due process clause in the abstract, and they're very committed to it. I get it. If it were me, I'd want due process, okay, I get it, I'm gonna give people due process. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Counsel and mayor are elected officials.
Yeah.
Boards and commissions are appointed. Most boards and commissions are somewhat advisory, however, some have greater authority to dispense funds and approve applications and such. If at the board or commission level, someone's rights have been infringed, who's named as defendant? The board or commission or council as being the overseeing body? And then to what extent are we responsible for oversight?
Yeah, if it's, a due process, if it's a situation where the planning commission provides a final recommendation, usually that suit wouldn't be brought until after, they would exhaust their process first, and then they'll name the city. If they believe that they have a strong enough case and strong enough evidence to pin their due process violation on the bad acts of some individuals, they'll try to name those persons individually. So if the bad act occurred at the planning commission, they might try to reach back. Very rare that happens, but it's possible. But yeah, quite often, if there's a due process violation, they're looking to have the decision set aside, they'll name the city as the defendant, and they'll name the individual members of the board or commission in their official capacity.
Exactly.
And an official capacity suit is nothing more than a lawsuit against the city itself. Now, if the plaintiff really thinks that somebody violated their right, or they're really trying to, you know, create some oomph, they'll try to bring individual liability claims as well. And the person, as I explained earlier, the person would be exposed if they participated notwithstanding a conflict of interest, right? Or something like that, where they really were doing bad things.
Well, as I understand, those individuals who feel that their rights have been infringed have the right or interest to bring theirs to appeal to council, basically, as the Supreme Court, if you will. Or the overseeing authority, but I've always felt somewhat naked, not knowing what those boards and commissions are doing on our behalf, except for the fact that Mr. Murphy records most of them, and we have a documented record of what happened.
Yeah, you have staff support for those, and they have the same notice and hearing requirements, and so staff would typically keep the antenna up for saying, oh, we, you know, notice is a good example. And you usually correct those before you do, you want to correct those before you go too far down the path. Because I used to tell applicants, like, if there's a problem with the notice, and they go, oh, God, you know, you mean we're not going to get the council next week? We kind of always described it in terms of, it's better to go back and redo the notice and make sure we got it right, because, you know, if you do get an approval, you don't want it to be at risk for someone claiming bad notice. I know it's frustrating that it takes more time, but it's better for everyone to get the notice issue right. Now, on the other hand, if the planning commission sent up a recommendation for denial, but in, it's clear from the staff report that the denial was based on inappropriate reasons, then the council can kind of reform the record on that.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem or concern standing tall for that which I have done.
Yeah.
But I'm very nervous about having to be responsible for that which somebody else did, over which I have no control.
Right, it wouldn't attach individually, it's an individual council. Yeah. Yeah. This claim against the city is a big tent claim.
Got it.
Yeah, they're bringing a claim against the city, so everyone's under that tent.
Thank you.
You have thoughts? Okay, so here's just a couple of tips. There is a handout on quasi-judicial, I can, we can do quasi-judicial training for a couple of hours, so I just tried to give you a couple slides on it. This slide breaks down a little bit more of what it means to be acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, what your responsibilities are, but here are just a couple of tips. Very important ones. Consider your land use and licensing matters only at the properly noticed public hearing, okay? And I know it's tough sometimes, because the community may be well aware that there's a difficult development application coming up next week, we have the temptation to say, hey, you know, while we're in a quiet moment at our work session, let's talk about that. No.
Right.
Or let's talk, or, you know, you talked about what's coming up at the next meeting. That's not the time to talk about that application, okay? Remaining fair and unbiased, don't make up your mind before the hearing, be an open book. Don't participate if you have a personal interest. For planning commissioners, if you're the next door neighbor to the rezoning request, do you have to recuse yourself? Do you have a conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Okay, so make sure you're tuned to those things. Don't make your decision on the basis of irrelevant or non-existent criteria, like my licensing situation. I'm gonna vote no because I don't like it, right? And also, don't base it on criteria you wish you had. We see this in land use quite a bit, you know, it'd be a tough development, and go, well, you know, I could vote for this if only they put solar panels on the roof. So I move to approve condition on them providing solar panels on every unit. If we don't have that criteria, and that's not required by our code, then don't slip in at the last minute. That's a huge risk factor to have your decision overturned. And then finally, most, very important, don't engage with one side or the other before the hearing. That's called ex parte context, and let me break that down. This is a critical duty of you as judges, and I know it's a lonely part of the job, absolutely, right? But part of the job as a judge is not to discuss with the parties to the case, the case outside of the hearing. Why? Where did this nonsense come from? The due process clause, right? Yeah, it's as simple as this at a local level. If you and I are in a dispute, and I owe you money, you get sick of waiting around, and our trial's the next day in front of the judge, right? You have an expectation that I'm not on the phone with the judge the night before going, hey, Judge, how's it looking? You got a rule for me, right? Yeah. Translate that to what goes on, if this goes on, we get it, if it goes on in every community. And our constituents aren't bound by those rules, we are, right? So this is our opportunity to educate them on what our due process obligations are. So when the citizen corners you at the grocery store and says, hey, I see that big rezonings on your agenda next week, let me tell you why you should vote no, what are we gonna say? Yeah, I can't talk to you about it right now. It's not that we don't want to hear from you, we would love to hear from you, but as the decision maker, I can't talk to you about it outside of our public hearing. I know it's a lonely part of the job, it's sort of a cruel part of the job.
That's what I say, is just, you know, come to the public hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a cruel part of the job, because you pick up the morning paper, huge application on commission agenda tonight, you know, and he's on the commission, let's go talk to him.
Right.
Yeah.
So people in training or receiving, because I come from P&amp;Z before the council, is somebody insists, and they follow you, and they're trying to make their point.
Yeah.
At the meeting, you haven't been biased, but to bring that up, that, hey, I run into, and they insisted on talking, I did not engage in conversation, should you make that knowledge to the rest of your commission so they're aware of that happening?
Yeah, it's, you know, look the less for, I'm sure you have tools for dealing with this. If they actually gave you substantive information, right, if they, I don't think you have to disclose that someone tried to contact me, right? But they didn't give you anything of substance. But if you did get information of substance that does bear upon the criteria, or how you might make your decision, then I think the further thing to do is disclose that. At the outset of the hearing, say, oh, do we have proper notice, are there any disclosures? Yes, I just wanted to make it clear that I got an email from my neighbor about this application, but once I noticed that it was about this application, I sent it to staff, and it's in your packet. Have we heard our issue? Yeah, because now everybody who wants to participate in the trial knows it's there, and they can look at it and respond to it. Yeah. Yeah. So, I know it's a cruel part of the job, but we recommend staying away from those outside the hearing discussions, so that you can stay in the game, right? I don't want you to be the commission member or the council member who, in a real, hotly contested application, somebody stands up and says, I object to this proceeding, right? I think that that commissioner ought to be removed, because I know he's been sending and receiving emails about this case. And then we're gonna have a little mini-trial on whether that occurred, and whether there's a bias or a disclosure that needs to be made, right? So, just arm yourself.
On the other end of it, I'm the applicant, you know, not somebody against it, but I'm the applicant. It's small town, come on, let me show you what I'm gonna do. Come on up, and this is the land, here's why I built this, and they need to steer clear and tell that applicant, well, you show it to me, I'm gonna recuse, I won't vote at all, because you, yeah.
Do you do your site visits?
I think commission on their own kind of goes around, right?
Yeah, we get maps, we could site visit something that's on there, just to see if that's what the property looks like.
Yeah.
But even that is, you know, they never allow jurors to do that, who are kind of sitting in judicial capacity during a jury trial, because you don't want people gathering information on their own.
Yeah.
Because people may be privy to information that the others are not privy to.
Right.
But that's kind of a minor point.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a risk, it doesn't happen all that much, but it is, you do your site visit at all, you do it as individually, it's just to look at the site, don't engage with the owner when they're out there. When you come back and your commission, I think it's important to just make a disclosure, any disclosure, just site visit.
Right.
And if actually you did see something substantive at the site, because if it does influence, then get that on the record.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right, there's more of that. Just to wrap up this suggestion, just contrast this role between legislative and quasi-judicial. So when you're making general policy, council members, right, you want to just change the sign code generally, you can lobby and be lobbied anywhere. Your constituents can come up to you and say, hey, I want you to prohibit murals as a general policy proposition, right? And you can base your decision on whether or not to allow or prohibit murals based on your own individual desires, as long as you're complying with First Amendment.
Correct.
Speech issues. And you can gather up information outside the hearing, but when you're in this quasi-judicial capacity, all those things are a no-no. You have to make your decision based on the evidence that's given to you at the hearing, you have to set aside personal preferences and perspectives, and base it just solely on the rezoning criteria, or the subdivision criteria, or the licensing criteria, and you can't engage with interested parties outside the hearing, okay? Last piece, important piece of the due process aspect is, deliberations are very important. We like, and we encourage you, when the hearing's over, to have a discussion as council, have a discussion with planning commissioners, as to why you're going to decide the case the way you're going to decide it. Couple of suggestions in regard, have your criteria in front of you. Sometimes it doesn't start out perfectly, you know, the mayor says, okay, let's have a council discussion, and someone says, I'm gonna vote no, I just don't like it. We can fix that, just use Sam's rule of why. You know, another council member say, why don't you like? Well, I don't like it because the applicant's a jerk. Oh, no, we're gonna set that issue. I don't like it because it's too tall. Oh, well, now we're getting somewhere, because staff report already talks about the height limit, talks about whether it's inside or outside the height limit, maybe they're asking for a variance from the height limit. Now, so when you ask each other why, we find that you tend to drill down and have a great discussion on the actual criteria. And in doing that, you also kind of toss to the curb the criteria that may not apply, or the basis that may not be defensible. So I always encourage you to have that discussion. Somebody says, I don't like it, it's too tall, but why is it too tall? And that, by just natural evolution of our discussion, we're gonna get to a good basis for our decision, we're gonna have a transcript then that shows how you reached your decision, and that's a good place to be.
To some extent, we actually saw that last week in Denver at a hearings, at a Senate hearing.
Yeah.
Where one of the committee members stated, we're just gonna vote no.
Yeah.
It was interesting.
Yeah, what you're left with in defending that claim is, there's nothing in your record that shows why you decided the case the way you decided it.
He did give a reason why, but he just had a pen and pencil.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. All right. Suggestion six, play ethics first. What I'd like to do here is just very quickly show you the handout that I created, and I take full responsibility, I hope the handout is after its summation of three things I want to touch on in the world of ethics. First, in matters of ethics, my biggest takeaway is be conservative in matters of ethics, and recognize that appearances matter, right? It's always interesting, and sometimes even a little exciting, to read about that ethics scandals, when they're in another community. Right? Yeah. Right? But you know what, the other interesting thing about ethics scandals, when you read about them in the paper, what usually makes the headline above the fold on page one or the local section? The allegation, right? What usually gets tucked in the little sidelight a couple of months later? If the person actually, you know, when the whole process is done, and it turns out they actually didn't commit a violation, that gets a lot less press. And it's a recognize appearances matter, conservatism is a good idea in this area, and that'll serve you well. Now, and then, my last takeaway is also, remember this piece, your code of ethics is actually your best friend. What? That's ridiculous. What? Yeah, it's not, it's not a bunch of traps for the unwary. If we become familiar with our code of ethics, and we can work through it, and we understand what it means, then we are not only showing that we have a commitment to high ethics, we are also armed to deal with, do you ever get these? Do you ever get unreasonable accusations of unethical conduct? Yeah. Right? Yeah. And, you know, every community's got them at certain points in time, where someone's gonna come up to an elected appointed official and say, that's unethical! You know, you, and you go, wait a second. I'm very familiar with my code of ethics, I know when there's a conflict of interest, I know what the rules apply, and what you're accusing of is simply unreasonable, and it has nothing to do with our code of ethics. So that's why the code of ethics can be your best friend, if you have a good working familiarity with it. You can show people in the community, we take it seriously, we understand what our expectations are, and so on. So, familiarize yourself with your code of ethics, recognize that as a home rule of municipality, you do have local rules that you follow, because you'll hear, you know, from other elected and appointed leaders, things that really come out of the state code of ethics, right? Things I want to touch on real quickly is conflict of interest, because that's the main one you bump into. All right, when do we have a conflict of interest? Want to take a swing at it?
When we have financial gain.
Yeah.
For your benefit.
Yeah. Okay.
You can't exercise independent judgment.
Yeah.
Because of.
As a government official, as a government official, right? Yeah, so if there's something in front of me, as a government official, my board or my council, and it's going to affect my own financial interest, I'm now in a conflict of interest situation, right?
Right.
Yeah, your code actually calls it a direct conflict of interest, and that's when some decision that you might take, right, would affect your own business or financial interest, or the financial interest of a competitor, or you have a direct financial interest in, or it affects the fortunes of your relatives, those are all conflict of interest situations. What do I have to do when I have a conflict of interest?
We can disclose.
What else?
Disclose.
Disclose, declare, we actually used the word declare, when do I do that?
Soon as...
Should I do it privately, the city manager in his office on Friday, and I'm good? I'm not gonna be at next week's meeting I have, you know?
As soon as the hearing's open.
Yeah. Yeah, when that matter's called up on the agenda, the mayor says, "Next agenda item is to award a contract for, you know, supplemental snowfall services, and you own a business that put a bid in? Mayor, I need to make a disclosure, I have a conflict of interest."
Well, one of the things that, I mean, we've had a couple of business people that have had business, especially with the liquor business.
Yeah.
And, uh, Kyadra has kind of a standing thing that when something like that come up, she always puts that forth, has put that forth, saying that, you know, this is, you know, I have a liquor store or whatever. So, I think anytime that something like that comes up, it'd be a good idea to send Audra a note to disclose that in our packet, would that suffice?
Is this involving the liquor authority?
With anything, anything. Anytime, anytime that you'd have a...
It was a disclosure saying that they, they were able to make an independent decision not, not influenced by their ownership. But we never had an issue with that.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, we never had, but I just, but if someone is gonna have a financial interest, if you're ready to write something up, send it to her, I would think.
Yeah.
That's right, so that she can put it in our packet, so that we know when that item comes up and we review it, you know, when we're reviewing all of the information that we're aware of as council.
And this is of a fellow member?
Yeah. Let's say, for instance, I had a, something that I had, somebody was gonna buy some land that I can be part of, and I sent a note to others saying, you know, I'm going to disclose that information to council by this remedy.
Okay. I need, I need, let's just help you.
Okay.
On that, so do you, do you declare, do you have to declare publicly your conflict?
Well, what we do is, we had disclosures in the council packet.
Okay.
That said they had an ownership in a liquor business.
Okay.
And, um, but, but just that, that declaration.
Okay, so then, then with that, so that's on the record, that there's a, okay, all right. Um, and it's not in one of these five circumstances that's automatically disqualifying?
Right.
Okay, perfect. What if it's, if it is one that's automatically disqualifying, we make a disclosure and we recuse ourselves?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that, that disclosure is made publicly?
Yes.
Yeah, "This is a new liquor application, I'm a half-owner of the liquor store that's asking for the license, I'm gonna recuse myself."
Right.
Okay, yep. Yeah, one thing, one practical tip is when it comes time to make a disclosure, um, you go, "Hey, presiding officer, I'd like to make a disclosure, I have a conflict of interest." You stand up and you leave the room. Was that adequate? In practical terms, I would say for your constituents, it wasn't, because what happens when you leave the room, right? Like, everyone's head's exploding, right? They go, "What's the conflict? What's the conflict? Oh my God, he must be so corrupt." Right? So when you make that public disclosure, I think it's your time to shine and tell you the people why you're recusing yourself. So it's, "Mayor, I'm recusing myself from this hearing because I have a financial interest as an owner in the business that is the applicant." That shows everybody and avoids all that rampant speculation, like, what's... You're gonna have, I saw that your code of ethics, you don't have to leave the room, what's your practice in that regard?
We generally will recommend that, especially if it's a direct conflict of interest.
Okay.
So they're not, they're influencing potentially the other members.
Claring at the other member.
Yeah, right. Yeah, 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 you know, it's, yeah, there's two dynamics to that, I'm not so worried about the person with the conflict going to the background going, doing this. But I'm worried more of your kind of, um, relationship to the rest of the body and giving them the freedom. Do you think they would have a little bit different discussion if the person holding the conflict was not in the room during the discussion?
True.
If so, then fairness, give them that opportunity.
Right.
If they need factual information from the applicant, they'll find a way to ask for that.
Right.
And also, I think, protect yourself from the risk of being accused of improper influence, that if you are in that situation, try and find a way to have someone else do the talking for you, because there is a line between fact and influence, right? I recuse myself, I recuse myself because I'm a half-owner of this liquor store, but I'll be outside if you have any questions for me.
Right.
Is that, yeah, just per, in practical terms personally, I would suggest you find a way to reduce that risk for yourself.
Right.
Because I wouldn't want you to be called back into the room and then they say, "Okay, we're trying to understand what the distance is to the school, can you elaborate?" And then you start saying things and someone else says, "Well, I think he's trying to influence me now."
Right.
And so that's where the rub can be. So I think in those situations, it's good to find a representative to do your talking for you, yeah.
One thing I would ask in that is, I understand your example was an example of a direct financial conflict, ownership in business, but, uh, because that's who would be used against you, and they tell, you know, council and commission members that they probably have a conflict, and they'll say, "Well, it's not direct like what, what Sam White said when he came down here." Wouldn't you agree, an appropriate standard for a conflict of interest is an appearance of impropriety? Like, if you have a family member who has a financial interest in a competing business and you're sitting on a board making a decision and you vote no...
Right.
Well, I mean, of course, that's hindsight being 2020, but the appearance of impropriety is important.
Yeah.
In terms of being judicial, right, and an independent judicial person, I'm shutting up, you know, I just wanna emphasize that.
Yeah, in these kind of proceedings, remember the people who judge whether you engage in ethical conduct, they're judges themselves. So they will tend to look at this through the lens that they would look at themselves, and appearances matter to them, but more than that, your code actually codifies the concept that the standard is, if there's a substantial appearance of impropriety, right, then one should step away. So that makes, part of the difficult part about ethics is getting outside yourself. Like, these are not subjective standards, these are objective standards. So if you have one of those close calls, I encourage you to bounce it off the city attorney's office, though the city attorney's office is not an ethical advisor for any individual, they can, however, give you perspectives on what the city's expectation might be. Um, you know, look at it by getting outside yourself, maybe bounce it off someone as well. Um, the other thing I, practical thing is your impact on your fellow members.
Yeah.
Every ethical decision is a fork in the road, right?
Right.
Where I'm either gonna decide to participate or recuse myself, right? If I decide to recuse myself, the issue is fully self-contained. And even if I was a bit conservative, yeah, I took myself out of the game, I'm a little frustrated by that, but I didn't bring my other members into it, right? Once you go down the other fork in the road, you will have taken what was a personal decision on a matter of ethics and now done something that is gonna have an effect on the rest of the board. They're gonna be the ones sitting there listening to, why is that person sitting there? Don't they have a conflict? Right? And so that does have an impression on your fellow members, that's why I think conservatism is a good touchstone in all of this. Yeah, any final thoughts, Mayor? Okay. Um, also on here, I gotta give you a little bit more about the standard gifts, right? Because it's not the huge salary that brings us to public service, it's the enormous gifts, right? Yeah. So you have a rule that says, as a council member, don't accept any gift of more than fifty dollars, right? And I think the practical caveat, though, it's not codified, is obviously, don't accept the gift if it's clear the gift is being given to you to curry your favor on a vote or reward you for some official action. Who had my developer example earlier? Developer got the application on tomorrow night's agenda, and lo and behold, the forty-nine-dollar gift basket arrives at your door that day. That's not the time to accept that gift, right? Yeah, and it's, staffs, I'm sure, got practical ways of dealing with those, they can contact the applicant.
The other thing I've read on that, you know, gifts rules is that for, from any one particular person...
Yeah.
That gives you over a course of a year.
Yeah.
Can be over, the, the, not the, the number that we have set in place.
Yeah, I need to ask, is the city taking a position on whether your local stuff fully displaces amendment forty-one, or do you kinda do a hybrid?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, so we have this, what you're referencing is amendment forty-one, the constitutional amendment that was passed a number of years ago, that put into the Colorado State Constitution, among other things, a gift ban for elected officials. It's got a provision at the end that says, "These provisions don't apply to home rule municipalities that have adopted their own rules regulating these matters." And we just got a case out of, um, a Denver district court, I think it's going up on appeal, but it basically said, "When we mean this, these matters, it's enough that you just have local rules touching on gifts. Doesn't have to be exactly the same as the state law, as long as you have local rules." So in general, follow your local rule, which is a fifty-dollar rule, the state rule is no elected official shall accept more than sixty-five dollars from any one person in any one year. And I would still apply the same concept, I don't know if you've ever talked about whether the fifty dollars is a rolling or one-time or year-over-year, right? Yours is written more...
We had that conversation, remembering, though, I think I have to move on to my attention point, we did talk about amendment forty-one, and our interpretation is no more than fifty dollars in gifts for a year.
For the year? Here's, it's not one-time for one person, that's a total of fifty dollars for all a year.
Okay, okay, yep, so you've actually borrowed, even though your code, you could argue, was transactional, I think you, you...
Right.
You're less at risk if you follow amendment forty-one's concept. What you've done then by doing that is you're basically taking the sixty-five dollar threshold and dropped it down to fifty, and if you do all the other things, you should be fine. Yep. All right, and then last one, confidential information, thou shall not use confidential information gained as a government official to further your own financial interest, right? So, in my executive session example, what if council member Jones, remember that appraisal? What if council member Jones left that executive session and actually, instead of disclosing what the city would offer, said, "Hey, I'll tell you what, I'll offer you three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars." Is that a no-no?
No.
Yeah, and now he's taking confidential information that gained as a government official and using, I, and I had that exact case. An elected official reacted on information they received in executive session and offered to buy property out from under the city. Didn't work out so well for the elected official. So that's it on ethics. My last suggestion is to be cautious in administrative matters, just kinda going back to my original slide about roles, recognize that you have a council-manager form of government, right? And in that regard, um, the council under your charter is the legislative body, the policymaking body. You know, we're a corporation, who owns our corporations?
Citizens.
Citizens. As council members, you're the ones probably most uniquely qualified with that singular job of taking what the community expresses as their needs and desires and figuring out from a visionary perspective, how do we put government's resources to that? Relish that part of the job. You know, think master plan, five-year planning, long-range utility planning, where do we want the city to be in three, five, ten years? Because you've already got a system in place that your voters put in place when you adopted the charter of having that distinction. So, you spend your energy mostly up in that area, defining broad vision, recognizing that you've got a structure in place for the administrative details of implementing your vision, will be carried out by the administrative staff. There are some risks, like if we duplicate rules, that's inefficient and so on, right? So, we don't harp, I don't try to harp too much on that policy-administrative distinction, but do recognize that exists, that the policy setting and the vision and those are uniquely council roles, that staff under your charter is there to make sure that they accomplish the work as defined, right, by the elected leadership within the parameters that you set, right? It's not a free call. Council's got all sorts of boundaries that they set for administrative staff, what's a good example, purchasing policies, right? And all sorts of executive expectations that you have for staff. So that, um, this principle is actually codified in your charter, right? Uh, this is section six point six of your charter, recognizing that distinction, that the mayor and council members deal with the administrative service of the city solely through the city manager, right? Um, this can all be done consistent with getting updates where you need information. This charter provision doesn't prohibit an inquiry for purposes of information, but it does say that council members shall not give orders or reprimands to employees underneath the manager, and that's where it translates into that risk we talked about earlier. Good? Um, that distinction between role, uh, policy administration is particularly important on personnel matters, recognize that council does have a role in personnel matters, but it's kind of the broad stuff, right? Council picks and supervises a couple of direct reports. Those are manager?
Attorney.
Attorney, judge?
Judge.
Yeah. So under our system, everyone else is downstream of that. On those few direct reports, select and supervise, and embrace that, do a great job, you owe that to each other. Don't skip performance reviews, work on work plans together, check in, are things going okay? Right? That's the great place to be. Uh, you probably set the overall pay and classification plans, you probably set policies regarding permits, but recognize it's a whole different distinction between telling the manager, "Hey, next year's budget, we'd like a couple more FTEs in street operations to up our game on maintenance of the streets." That's a whole different thing than saying, "Hey, uh, public works director, I see you got a vacancy in street operations, and I got a cousin." You don't wanna be in those weeds, right? Uh, so don't get involved individually or improperly in selecting, evaluating, dealing with personnel matters that aren't yours, right? You don't wanna be, as an elected appoint official, you don't wanna be a super HR manager. He gets that hot seat, right? And there can be accountability on that, right? And there, there's gonna be some tough ones every now and then, uh, that he's gonna let you know on a need-to-know basis, "I got this personnel issue coming up." Right? Uh, oh, I don't know, we got an employee who's gonna be picked up tomorrow on a felony warrant, and the FBI's gonna come raid our offices, you gotta win to, he's probably gonna give you, you know, "Hey, council, FYI." But that's so we can coordinate our message and figure out who our vortex is, probably the mayor and manager for speaking with the press. Uh, it's not an invitation to rush in. The flip side of that is we're not naive enough, just like your attorney, I haven't done this a long time, I get it that somebody once in a while may come up to you and go, "Psst, can I talk to you about my boss?" And the response is?
Sure.
We value and support our employees, but we at the council level or the commission level do not get involved in personnel matters at that level. Have you talked with HR? Have you talked with your supervisor? We fully get that there are some situations that are real hairy and have a lot of warts, right? Like, if they come to you, "Psst, can I talk to you about my boss? He's sexually harassing me." We're not gonna turn around and say, "Have you talked to your boss?"
Right.
Yeah, right? But there are systems in place to deal with that. From where you sit as elected appoint official, if you get that inquiry, just know you need to offload that to the city attorney's office, who will then work with HR if it's appropriate to get the proper process in place, sources often involved in a lot of those. Okay? So, I think that's it. Uh, finally, when you deal with staff in your direct reports, speak with one voice, that's where you get accountability, that's where expectations are clear. I'd recognize that although there are seven members to the council, it's not seven bosses, it's one boss with one voice, and when you speak with that one voice, whether it's by four-three vote or sudden no vote, that's where you get your power and accountability and expectations are clear. Some nights, it's not that easy, right?
Right.
Hey, let's give Michael some direction, and we go down to Dais, there's, you got one direction, you got another, you got seven different directions, and the mayor says, "Michael, you got your direction?" You know, maybe it's late and you're not gonna get to it that night, you'll never get a result, but you do owe it to each other and to your direct reports to give them that one voice, because that's where you exercise your power and your strength. If it goes the other direction, you're really enabling kind of organizational problems, because I've seen it go this way, too. It's like that kind of dicey discussion, and then a couple of days later, people drop by Michael's office and go, "Huh." That conversation was kinda all over the place, so here's what I want you to do. Notice what pronoun I use, here's what I want you to do, right? You wanna come from, this is what we would like you to do. And council can do that no matter how difficult the issue is, you can sort out those priorities, you can keep working on the issue, maybe it takes a couple of work sessions.
And I usually do that at the end of the discussion, all this, Mike, you know, you, you know, if you have the information you need to move forward, and the only expectations, I guess, all of us would have is that if he doesn't have it, to say, "I'd like more clarification."
Yeah, yeah, and he's gotta feel, gotta feel that there's a mutual trust to be able to do that, and he's gotta be able to call you on it, and you gotta be able to say, "Yeah, well, I think we were clear." Right? So, wherever it ends, it's a whole continuum of possibilities, uh, but you can get there if there are strong differences in opinion, I think, you know, being clear with each other on expectations is critically important. My last suggestion is to use your power wisely and humanely, commit to a no-surprise approach with each other and staff, right? Your council meetings, your commission meetings ought not to be opportunities for gotcha moments, right? Because it doesn't reflect well on anyone, and you don't get what you need out of it, right? So from where you sit as a board commission member, if you read a packet and you've got something that you don't think's addressed, it's always okay to make that tactical phone that you don't think's addressed, it's always okay to make that tactical phone call to the manager and say, hey, I've read the package, could you be prepared to answer this question? Or deal with this issue, I didn't see that it was handled in the packet. Use your staff as a resource to help you do well and look good while doing it. Do you all get many emails directly from constituents?
No.
At home? You do?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You have, do you have a city-issued email address?
Yes.
Yeah. So not all of those emails you're gonna get are gonna be in your wheelhouse. But this is a great way to shine because maybe it's about some project, but you can tell the constituent, I'll forward this to the manager, the manager will get the answer. Department head on this in charge gets the manager the answer, we craft a response back to the citizen. Manager lets you know, hey, we sent the citizen this information, here's what we told him. Next time you bump into the citizen, you say, hey, did you get the information you need? Great, we all did great. Right? And that's just a man, just find time as council to talk about how you handle those kind of communications and how you use staff to do that. Finally, commit to act as we and not I, that's how you build strong relationships as a body with everyone, not just each other, but your staff and your constituents. And always keep in mind that you are the stewards of the best interests and assets of the city. And with that, unless you have questions with anyone in the space.
The only thing I wanted to say is that, you know, as mayor, follow what you've said tonight.
Yeah.
But what happens is, we get, I get so many requests and so many people emailing you or people stopping you on the street, not anything, sometimes bad, sometimes good, you know, sometimes requests, you know, speaking engagements and all this other stuff. And I, I get a lot of those.
Yeah.
And those are the things that, a lot of times, I may not let council know until the night of our city council meeting and say, I spoke at this event or that event or, or obviously, this is coming up, you know, something like that. So, uh, the mayor's job is a little bit different, or a lot different than council in that regard.
Yeah.
You try to balance those to make sure that you're being proper, I guess.
Yep. Yeah, and a lot of that is organic and it's fully supported, right? And then it functions just fine.
The way I look at it, a lot of times, some of these things that I, that I do, is I know that we've had discussions on it already and we know that, you know, the, the city and the county's council is very supportive of some of these things that I've been asked to do.
Yeah.
And that happens and, you know, go forward.
Yeah, and those work and those function just perfectly and fine and there's support for all those kinds of things, yeah. There are, whether it's a commission or a council, there's like discussion points that are kind of uniquely in your wheelhouse. I think it is good to set some time aside if they're starting to show themselves, like getting issues early, like if there's issues of, do we have some concern about how we interact with each other? Or do we feel the information flow's not working properly? Is there something about how we operate that I as one member don't like? Maybe, you know, get that out there early before it festers, right? Or is there something about dynamics that are going on? Do we feel like the debates are unbalanced? Or that there's not equal time? Or that we're not able to let things go? Those are all the kind of discussions that highly functioning bodies are willing to take the risk and have those conversations with each other. It's tough to find the quiet time, you have to do it in a transparent way, but it's good for the health of the organization to find time at a retreat or once a year or whatever forum is good for you to say, how are things going? How are you doing as a group? Yeah. To yours, I don't see that particular issue bubble up, all that issue, but sometimes it, sometimes it's unavoidable and you get surprised by it. And I had a mayor who reported back that he, he said, we didn't have time, so I wrote a letter on our behalf, expressing opposition to the withdrawal from the Paris Climate Accord. So wherever you are on that issue, think of what reactions, you know, the six other members of the elected body might have had on that issue. And so, you know, how do you deal with that kind of stuff? How do you know when something's creeping up that might be a risk factor for us as a group? Even though it never creates any legal risk, but it's kind of how we work as a group kind of risk.
That's what I try to do, I try to balance when I, if I see something that could be a risk factor. Like, for instance, last week, we had three letters of support that we, and we brought it forward to council to make sure that they were okay with it, which I knew they would be okay with, it just passed by a mayor.
Yep, so our filter to the radar is this one, that's well. Well, thank you very, very much for all your service and happiness and support.
You know, one thing I was gonna mention to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.